Buenos dias, com a comissão de saúde e assuntos veteranos está agora em sessão. A hora é às 2:00 da tarde e hoje é terça-feira, dia 12 de junho de 2025. Obrigada a todos que nos juntaram esta tarde, seja vocês aqui em pessoa ou assistindo online. Apprecitamos o seu tempo e o seu interesse nas questões que importam para nossos veteranos e nossa comunidade islandinha. Esta tarde estamos aqui para ouvir testemunhos sobre dois projetos. Primeiro, tomaremos comentários sobre o projeto 5, apresentado pelo senador Joe Sin Augustin. Este projeto atualizará a lei sobre placas de licenças de veteranos para permitir mais desenhos e reconhecimentos que refletem a orgulho e serviço de nossos veteranos islandeses. Depois disso, ouviremos testemunhos sobre o projeto 92, que eu apresento. Este projeto oficialmente designaria o mês de novembro como mês de reconhecimento de serviço de veteranos aqui em Guam. Seria útil para nós organizar mais programas e eventos para honrar e apoiar nossos veteranos durante todo o mês, não apenas no Dia dos Veteranos. Uma notificação do dia de audiência foi enviada a todos os senadores, cidadãos e as mídias no dia 5 de junho, e então novamente no dia 10 de junho de 2025, em linha com a lei do governo aberto. Também foi postado no site legislativo de Guam e no portal de notificações públicas de Guam. Obrigada novamente por estar aqui e por ajudar a moldar estas importante conversas. Todos os materiais relacionados com as procedências de hoje foram baixados para o drive da comissão e estão disponíveis em cópia impressa sob demanda. Um recorde completo deste dia será disponível no canal YouTube de mídia de Guan legislativa. Nesta hora, gostaria de reconhecer e convidar os membros da comissão que estão presentes hoje, senador Sean Gumatau, assim como meus outros colegas, senador Theresa Terlahi e senador Chris Barnett. Obrigada aos meus colegas, cidadãos e membros do público por estar aqui hoje. Seu envolvimento realmente importa. Ajuda-nos a criar leis melhores que servam à nossa ilha e ao nosso povo. Enquanto passarmos pela agenda de hoje, quero lembrar a todos que cada senador terá cinco minutos para fazer perguntas ou compartilhar seus pensamentos. O senador que apresentar cada projeto terá dez minutos para explicar sua legislação. Estes limites estão em place para manter as coisas em movimento e garantir que todos tenham a chance de falar. E antes de chegarmos ao primeiro projeto na agenda de hoje, quero diretamente abordar o projeto 85, o Acto de Empoderamento de Veterans. Originalmente foi feito para o dia de audiência de hoje, mas eu tomei a decisão de retrasar isso, então deixe-me explicar porque. No domingo, fui convidada, não a quem o chamou, a uma reunião com vários líderes de organizações veteranas. Eu apareci sabendo bem que a discussão não ia ser fácil, e vou ser honesta, eu recebi o bocadinho. Eles vieram preparados, eles eram directos e não cobriram nada de forma suave, e eu respeito isso e respeito eles. Não foi uma conversa boa. Foi mais parecido com sentar ao lado de meu próprio pai, um veterano vietnamo, sendo dito de forma clara o que eu fiz errado, e mais importante, o que precisava ser corrigido. E eu ouvi, porque é isso que requer um verdadeiro liderança. E deixe-me também dizer isso a aqueles que estão preocupados com a retrasagem. Eu não estou aqui para jogar política, estou aqui para fazer o trabalho, e isso significa pegar o calor quando necessário, ouvir quando importa, e fazer mudanças quando forem necessárias. Meu pai, ele não criou um punk, e eu não estou prestes a dobrar sob pressão ou orgulho. Os veteranos que conheci fizeram claro que este projeto precisa ser mais forte, claro e realmente empoderador, e é exatamente o que vamos fazer juntos. Estou comprometida a fornecer uma versão do projeto 85 que reflete as vozes de aqueles que serviram e sacrificaram por nossa ilha. Então sim, eu retraso a audiência porque eu não estou interessada em arrastar o projeto. Vamos tomar o tempo para resolver, e quando voltar, será melhor, será mais forte, e terá o apoio dos veteranos que é destinado a servir. Agora voltando aos projetos que discutiremos hoje. Se inscreveu para falar sobre o projeto 5, por favor, venha para a mesa. O senador Sin Augustin, que apresentou o projeto, não conseguiu se juntar hoje, mas enviou seus comentários de abertura. Vou seguir e ler eles para o registro em seu nome. Madame Presidente, meus colegas e a todos que estão presentes hoje, eu estou agradecendo as minhas desculpas pela minha ausência enquanto estou atualmente fora da ilha. Obrigada, madame Presidente, por conduzir esta audiência hoje. Esta legislação é um ato que honra e reconhece as contribuições de nossos heróis a través de um gesto simples, mas profundo, suas placas de licenças. Seja na guerra coreana, na guerra deserto Vietnã, operação de liberdade durável e liberdade iraquíaca, ou em qualquer um dos conflitos da nossa nação, nossos veteranos serviram com distinção, coragem e compromisso. Com este projeto, seremos honrados e significativamente mostrados adicionando opções de desenho como zonas de serviço, prêmios de valor e identificação específica de ramas para placas de licenças de veteranos de Guam. Ao fazê-lo, apoiamos o desejo de nossos veteranos de mostrar seu orgulho em seus carros como é mostrado quando eles adornam suas uniformes militares. Para nossos veteranos, isso pode ser um pequeno mudanço em um pedaço de metal simples, mas intende reconhecer sua identidade e a história do serviço sem selfless que você prestou sobre nossa ilha e na nação. Queremos reconhecer suas contribuições não apenas nas cerimônias ou em fala, mas em nossas vidas diárias e em todos os caminhos que você viaja. Vemos o orgulho que cada membro do serviço carrega, ouvimos as histórias das batalhas vidas e sacrifícios feitos. Vemos as lesões que eles carregam, e muitas vezes não vemos as lesões que não são vistas. Este projeto é outra oportunidade de honrar e servir aqueles que serviram com coragem e bravura, com tal melhora das placas de licenças adicionando zonas de conflito, codes específicos de ramas e espaço para medalhas ganhadas. Seríamos celebrando veteranos com mais do que apenas uma placa de licenças. Seríamos entregando-lhes um símbolo de reconhecimento, pertenência e orgulho. Isso é mais do que apenas uma melhora das placas de licenças, é uma expressão visual de nossos heróis. Eu pedroso o apoio de seus colegas para que este legislação seja aprovada. Obrigada, madame Presidente, e um pequeno abraço a todos por ter assistido e assistido. Mais uma vez, esse foi um discurso do autor do projeto 5, senador Joe Sin Augustin, que está atualmente fora da ilha. Agora vamos para o testemunho público sobre o projeto 5. Quando for sua turna de falar, por favor, fale claramente e de perto no microfone. Diga seu nome e nos deixe saber se você está aqui sozinho, ou representando uma agência do governo, ou falando em nome de um negócio ou uma organização. E começaremos... à minha direita? Pronto?
Ok. Boa tarde, senadores, muito obrigado. Meu nome é Roy Gumbawa. Sou o presidente do Gotcha 671, uma organização de lucro que trabalha com nossos veteranos aqui. Ao revisar o projeto, claro, é muito simples, direto, ao ponto. Tive apenas alguns perguntas e talvez algumas recomendações para avançar com não apenas o desenho. Entendo exatamente por que o senador quer colocar este projeto para o propósito, claro, de reconhecer nossos veteranos, e também dar-lhes a oportunidade de mostrar ainda mais orgulho, orgulho adicional no ramo de serviço, orgulho adicional nos medalhas e nas coméndias que eles ganharam enquanto estavam no serviço. E se eu posso, apenas porque eu não sou totalmente consciente, qual é o atual gabinete do governo sobre as placas existentes, as de alumínio que estão sendo feitas atualmente, quem as faz, quantas são produzidas a cada ano? E se, possivelmente, em frente com este desenho, talvez seja um bom momento para fazer uma redesignada total? Posso sugerir ir para uma versão completamente plana de plástico, apenas porque eu acredito que em algum momento vai reduzir o custo. Você não tem que se preocupar com o processo de estampagem. Com o plástico lá, você pode imprimir uma imagem completa. Eu vi muitos estados onde eles têm imagens de fundo, claro, em acordo com o GPD, não impedindo a leitura, por assim dizer. Essa é uma maneira adicional, claro, de adicionar gráficos e assim por diante para a própria placa. Essas foram apenas algumas das questões, ou não questões, apenas mais algumas das coisas que eu queria trazer é... Quero dizer, olho para o desenho e... Straightforward, você sabe, meu filho de oito anos, de onze anos, provavelmente poderia colocar algo assim juntos. E enquanto isso está bem, eu acho que há muito orgulho e há muito alegria que nossos veteranos querem poder colocar lá. E então, se eu pudesse, talvez implorar os designers, talvez até colocar para o público, colocar alguns desenhos para as pessoas reverir. Senão, estou a favor de criar esta nova placa de licenças para nossos veteranos para só pegar um pouco de orgulho e mostrar, mostrar por si. Muito obrigado.
Obrigada, Sr. Gumbawa. Sr. Sin Augustin?
Madame Presidente, se eu puder ir e deixar o Sr. Francisco ir.
Sr. Francisco?
Obrigado, madame Presidente, Sabrina Matanani, Sean Gumatau, Theresa Terlahi, Chris Barnett e Telo Taitegui. Obrigado, obrigado pelo seu apoio nisso. Houve bastante tempo atrás, quando eu apresentei o senador Sin Augustin para apresentar uma amendação à placa de licenças de veteranos oficialmente, quando nós começamos com ela, era a estrela brancinha, estrela supera, coração preto e cruz de sangue distinguido. Então, estou sentado com o senador Sin Augustin para amendar essa placa de licenças de veteranos e incluir a guerra Vietnã. Então, o que o senhor Sin Augustin fez foi apenas apresentar a guerra Vietnã, mas incluiram todas as outras guerras, o que está bem comigo. Mas meu principal preocupação é a guerra Vietnã, porque eu surfo em Vietnã, sou o presidente para os veteranos Vietnãos da América, 668. E eu vejo que nos estados, os diferentes estados, muitos veteranos andam com a placa de licenças de veteranos Vietnãos. Então, já colocamos no nosso desenho para o senhor Sin Augustin aqui, já desenhamos a placa de licenças de Vietnã, a maneira que queremos. As outras guerras, eu sei que não fiz nada, porque eu não acho que eles tenham uma organização como nós. Então, agradeço ao senhor Sin Augustin por apresentar essa amendação à licenças de veteranos originais, especialmente a placa de licenças de veteranos Vietnãos. E nós discutimos isso por bastante tempo na nossa agenda, quando, quando isso vai ser, quando isso vai acontecer. Eu espero que isso vai acontecer neste ano, porque eu gostaria de ver os veteranos Vietnãos andando com o logotipo. Porque agora a maioria deles tem ou o exército, marins, forças armadas, navy no veículo, mas eu acho que eles serão mais orgulhosos de andar com o logotipo Vietnã. Então, estou aqui para testificar 100% em apoio a este projeto, e espero que o corpo aqui expedite isso, porque a cada ano estamos perdendo mais veteranos Vietnãos. Eu sei que nosso número não está aumentando, está diminuindo, e o mínimo que podemos fazer é fornecer a eles a placa de licenças para que eles possam andar com orgulho com essa placa de licenças. Obrigado.
Obrigado, Sr. Francisco. Nós certamente trabalharemos no relatório da comissão para este projeto e tentaremos pegar ele para a próxima sessão legislativa. Então, obrigada. Próximo.
Aí vamos nós. Eu sabia que essas botas eram para algo aqui. Senhoras e senhores, com a legislativa, obrigado por me dar o honor de vir e testificar neste projeto hoje. Sou um membro muito, muito orgulhoso do capítulo 668 da VVA, e também um veterano três vezes, também serviu em Irak. E você sabe, quando se trata desse projeto, eu entendo que podemos provavelmente continuar sempre, em relação a, vamos ver, vamos verificar isso, ou vamos verificar aquilo. Mas eu tenho sido membro, ando há três anos com a VVA, e eles estão trabalhando nessa questão delicadamente durante os últimos três anos e também, você sabe, não é segredo oculto, com o aumento do limite de idade dos veteranos Vietnãos, que os números estão diminuindo. E quando eu vou para Hóis, e eu vou para Califórnia e todos esses outros lugares, eu vejo todos esses homens com todas essas placas lá. Você sabe, eles saíram e fizeram o sacrifício ultimate, sem nenhum "obrigado", por acaso. Esse foi o único jogo que as pessoas não podiam voltar, heróis. E, e há, há não tantos restantes. E eu acho que, eu realmente acredito que não é se é um vencedor que este será aprovado, e eu acho que o momento para o vencedor é agora. Eu extremamente, eu extremamente recomendo que este projeto seja aprovado, e então, se eles querem fazer outras coisas, enquanto as outras organizações veteranas se organizam, se eles querem fazer outras coisas para amendá-lo mais tarde, é esse o processo, temos um processo para isso. Mas eu acho que o território de Guam é provavelmente um dos últimos que não tem tido algo assim aprovado. É muito demorado. Guam tem, eu estive aqui desde 1978, e eu vi Guam tomar o leading em tantas coisas diferentes, mesmo através do todo o endeavor de COVID. Mas nesse, nós não tomamos o leading, estamos atrás do limite. E eu acho, com respeito a todos os veteranos Vietnãos e aos poucos veteranos coreanos, se temos anyos restantes, mas eu extremamente recomendo e pedo-lhe, por favor, apoiar este longo projeto demorado. Obrigado.
Sr., se você puder, por favor, dê seu nome para o registro.
Sim, meu nome é Daniel Kogar.
Obrigado.
Desculpe por isso.
Está tudo bem. Sr. Sin Augustin?
Madame Presidente, boa tarde e, honorosos senadores, boa tarde. Meu nome é Joe Sin Augustin, diretor do Office de Serviços Veterans de Guam. Eu quero primeiro agradecer o autor deste projeto, o Sr. Joe Sin Augustin, senador Joe, por mover este projeto, criar este projeto, e também os homens que estão atrás deste projeto. Como veterano, eu mesmo, veterano de deserto, veterano de deserto, estou 100% a favor deste projeto. Acredito nos comentários que foi feito por o Sr. Gumbawa, e as preocupações, e a boa visão que eles querem apoiar com relação a este projeto. Acredito aos dois senhores à minha direita com relação à necessidade de garantir que este projeto se torna uma realidade, devido ao fato de que a diminuição da população de nossos veteranos coreanos e nossos veteranos Vietnãos estão, de fato, acontecendo. Mas ao dizer isso, o painel que você vê aqui será, talvez, os membros da comissão para expeditar e colocar este desenho junto. Além disso, serão a geração mais nova de veteranos que foram envolvidos na deserto deserto, deserto, liberdade iraquíaca e durabilidade. Nós faremos o trabalho de lago, mas teremos a entrada de muitos desses veteranos que foram envolvidos nessa era também. Então, vamos balancear, mas no meantime, eu vou focar em expeditar o desenho para o veterano Vietnão, que já está pronto. Vamos olhar para o logotipo de veterano coreano, desenho, vamos mudar de lá, e então começaremos a construir em outras eras de guerra, se você quiser. Eu vou focar em movimentar essas duas partes particulares primeiro, o Vietnão e o veterano coreano, seguida pelas outras eras de guerra. E o Sr. Gumbawa é um da geração mais nova, eu sou uma da geração média, eu só sinto velho, mas eu acho que podemos expeditar isso e balancear. Eu vou, apenas para te deixar saber, provavelmente estar juntando o imposto de renda e depois colocando parte desse, porque há provavelmente um problema de financiamento, ou ajustar a quantidade de placas que estão sendo introduzidas simultaneamente e produzidas, e pode overwhelmá-los, mas eu deixarei eles decidir, farei a parte do desenho, deixarei eles enfrentar o impacto físico. Ok? Mas com isso, como diretor do Office de Serviços Veterans de Guam, e como veterano eu mesmo, eu apoio este projeto plenamente, e farei o que for necessário para garantir que nossos veteranos recebem o que merecem. Muito obrigado.
Obrigada, Sr. Sin Augustin. Também queria reconhecer a presença de meu colega, senador Telo Taitegui. Obrigada, senador. E obrigada ao painel por aparecer hoje e testificar sobre o projeto 5. Eu vou marcar que Maria Lizama, do Departamento de Revenção e Taxação, disse que ela não conseguiu participar, mas ela será submitting testemunhos escritos. Este projeto agora vai para as audiências de marca, e eu vou ligar a você, Sr. Sin Augustin, para dar você uma cópia uma vez que a marca está completa sobre o projeto 5, assim como com o senador Joe Sin Augustin. Nesta hora, vou abrir o chão para meus colegas para qualquer questiona que eles possam ter. Senador Gumatau?
Obrigado, madame Presidente, também um filho de um marino estadual e muito orgulhoso disso. Mais uma vez, eu quero agradecer todos os veteranos nesta sala por seu serviço, não apenas ao povo de Guam, pelo seu tempo e todas suas contribuições para suas organizações, mas obviamente para nossa grande nação. Eu só queria, para o registro, madame Presidente, apenas dizer que BBMR ofereceu um notificación fiscal sobre o projeto, e antecipou um impacto fiscal do Fundo Geral de causa dos custos que estão envolvidos com a fabricação dos projetos de placas de licenças de veteranos, com nomes especiais e desenhos gráficos, sem dados ou informações pertinentes de ambos, DRT e o Office de Serviços Veterans de Guam, BBMR foi incapaz de oferecer um impacto fiscal. Madame Presidente, reconhecendo que a Section 7120.2(c)(2) de Guan, section 7120.2(c)(2), autoriza o Office de Serviços Veterans de Guam a adotar regulamentações para implementar e administrar provinas da lei de placas de licenças de veteranos. Qual informação está disponível do painel? Sumarizando esforços, eu sei que você mencionou um pouco, entre DRT, Office de Serviços Veterans, a Comissão de Veterans de Guam e outras organizações governamentais e não governamentais, para revisar a lei de placas de licenças 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 de licenças
Bom, eu acho que a resposta simples, quando, quando chegarmos a uma tanta preocupação, a uma lei que não apenas o Office de VVA, GOVA, envolve em si mesmo no desenho, mas envolvemos aqueles que são definitivamente impactados pelo desenho. Não apenas, então, eu diria isso, antigamente, o desenho inicial do exército militar, o primeiro setor de placas de licenças, e então a placa de licenças especial de reconhecimento, esse desenho só veio de meu escritório, eu mesmo. E se olhar para ele, mesmo que ele tenha passado e parece bom, é totalmente injusto não envolverem ninguém mais na entrada desse desenho. Eu avançei porque era um tipo de urgência, mas não é tão justo, porque eu não recebi boas entradas da comunidade, especialmente aqueles que estavam envolvidos ou tinham direito a essas placas de reconhecimento especial. Ok? No entanto, ao dizer isso, a submissão desse desenho, ele passou, não havia nenhum argumento, eu acho que os homens que tinham direito a isso, a placa de reconhecimento especial, não tinham reclamações. Então, até hoje em dia, eles ainda o tem no veículo, e, e continuam a andar com ele orgulhamente. Há, nesse parte, o que eu sempre recomendo é que o Office de Estado seja o único a novamente, um tipo de controle da submissão ou a aprovação dessas placas quanto a quem vai, portanto, permite aos veteranos chegar com o formulário DD214, e para nós ir e garantir que aquela pessoa de fato se engajou na operação deserto, deserto, deserto ou veteranos Vietnãos. Então, nós vemos, e, e vai para nosso escritório, que eu acho que é importante garantir que dentro deste projeto, que isso seja incorporado. Isso faz sentido?
Sim, eu quero dizer, o estatuto foi, foi enactado em julho de 2023, então, eu só iria fortemente encorajar você em seu escritório a encontrar um calendário e garantir que haja pelo menos ticks regulares lá, que você possa voltar, quero dizer, para estar em conformidade com o estatuto. E eu acho que faz sentido o que você disse, mas lembre-se, você não é o único, você ainda tem, você tem gente como DRT, e alguns dos grupos que estão nesta sala hoje. Espero que você pegue a informação deles, você sabe, se tiver que enviar ela duas vezes por ano, mas eu iria encorajar você, talvez hoje, novamente, uma medida de dois anos que realmente devemos estar bem no topo dela. Estamos aqui fazendo, estamos discutindo esta medida particular, mas deveria ser algo que deveria ser feito muito, muito regularmente. Também tenho uma pergunta mais, madame Presidente. A quaiscento tem a ideia de produzir placas de licenças especiais de veteranos e placas de licenças para a população geral através do Acto de Indústria Penitenciária, estabelecido por第九GCA, art. 4, particularmente como uma maneira de encorajar imates elegíveis a apreciar o serviço e o sacrifício de nossos heróis nacionais, que foram propostos em defesa das mesmas liberdades que os imates estão, espero, trabalhando honestamente para reclamar? Você está engajado, e você é antigo diretor de correções, você está engajado com eles em qualquer, com esses tipos de esforços?
Sim, então, obrigado por isso, senador, você sabe, e estou feliz que você levou isso à tona. É, é, é uma parte bastante importante de programa, se pudesse ser colocado juntos. E se vocês pudessem encontrar uma maneira de me ajudar, ajudar Fred a levantar vocês em cima, encontrar o financiamento para poder encontrar o equipamento que é preciso ter, qual a localidade da infraestrutura que deve ser parecida. Então, com os seis anos, sete anos que eu estava lá, eu estava lutando para tentar implementar a produção de placas de licenças aqui em Guam. O equipamento é tão caro. Mas com isso dito, será que vale a pena o reabilitar e ter a produção aqui em Guam, e manter todos esses fundos aqui em Guam? Me ajude, vocês são mais inteligentes do que eu.
Oh, como... Eu concordo com você, mas também temos pessoas nesta sala que eu acho que se eles lhes perguntarem, eles podem ser capazes de cobrar algum dinheiro para apoiar isso, e eu acho que os indústrias penitenciárias seriam absolutamente apoiadas, especialmente quando vai voltar e apoiar nossos veteranos. Eu acho que pode ser um esforço unificado. Eu posso, nós só temos pelo menos um ou dois grupos aqui, mas há mais de um doze que podemos levantar todos e um pouco de dinheiro e depositar no DOC. Eu entendo o que você está dizendo, porque eu, com a sua experiência, mas agora que você está nessa posição, eu acho que você pode ajudar a lobby ainda mais com isso.
Introduza o projeto, vamos lá, Fred. É uma maneira de rehabilitar.
Então, venha ver o diretor de Serviços Veterans e contribua com dinheiro para este esforço. So come check the Director of Veterans Affairs and contribute money for this effort.
And let me, well, since we're there, let's just not stop there. There are other, there are other simple things, ladies and gentlemen.
We're talking about license plates. Now, now, don't get carried away.
Other simple things, right, where there's no reason why we should be getting rid of wet trash from the hotels when we could take that up to DOC and teach them how to recycle and raise, use these wet trash feed to feed their chicken, their pigs, dry it and sell it to the community.
I was trying to solicit funds for a machine to help Department of Corrections. Okay. All right, Madam Chair. I'll ask everybody offline, but I definitely think it's worth to be able to engage on this important issue. And thank you, Madam Chair, for the time, and I do support the measure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gumitata. Senator Terlai?
Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair. Hafde, everyone. It's very good to see you here. I note that there are very many Vietnam veterans and thank you all for your service, to all of you veterans here. Can, I fully support this bill, of course. I think it's well deserved and it's like Mr. Francisco said, one of the few things that we can do and that we can do urgently so that those who have earned this can drive, as you said, with pride and well deserved. Mr. San Augustine, Director, can you please, does your copy of the bill have these, like, samples attached?
Mine is better than that.
All right, yours is in color. Perfect. All right, maybe if you don't mind to explain that to the public who might be watching? I think if you hold it up, the camera will be able to grab it.
Yeah, absolutely. So this design here came from one of our members proposed, right? And it's actually based on this bill. So it's actually following what the bill is asking. The only thing is we got to make sure it's understood. And I fought with this until, you know, I took a quick five-minute nap in the car. When you put the military order of the Purple Heart, normally underneath there, you put that it's a military order of the Purple Heart. I don't want them to be construed and again, I'll get, I'll get the approval from the committee that it's still appropriate that, you know, right underneath the military order of the Purple Heart, instead of it saying Purple Heart, is it okay that it says Desert Shield, Desert Storm? Because I don't want people to say, well, that Purple Heart now is a Desert Shield, Desert Storm symbol. So I'll get the approval from the committee that that's good, just so it doesn't confuse the public. So that's it, it's simple. Here's what I got, the issue I got, because I was looking at my regular MC plate in my I will check with Revenue and Tax, what's the minimal sizes of the number, because some designs, you know, so you're talking Desert Shield, Desert Storm, you know, those palm trees have leaves and I don't want it to look like the rhino beetle went through it. Does that answer your, Madam?
Yes. What about the second page? There's another design.
Yes, that's, again, based on...
Is this the existing or no?
That's what they're saying, that's the current, right?
Current, okay. That's what I wanted to, that's what I wanted you to clarify. So this is the current?
That's correct.
Right. So the change is to move the medal over to the left?
To the left.
Any of the special medals will be moved to the left? The name of the conflict will be put on the left underneath the medal?
Right below, that's correct.
All right.
If they do, if they are entitled to a medal, if they don't have a medal, the name of the conflict will be there.
All right.
Some of them might not have a medal like me. I mean, I don't have medals.
All right. And the current ones, they continue to say, their letters on the front are, for example, Coast Guard on this one.
So the CG means it's a Coast Guard?
The Branch of Service.
Yes, the Branch of Service.
This one's Army, yeah. So that will continue, so they will still be recognized for which branch of service.
That's correct.
All right. So if you look at, on the bill, the bill's showing us also the existing law. So on Page Two, Subsection Three, it says below the license number, so this is an existing law. It says underneath the license number, they're going to again say, what's the special medal in words? Is that currently done or not?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, so that's fine. So the symbol of the medal, will there be, on Page Two, on the top, on the new section underlined, it says, "A specified graphic chosen by the Department of Revenue and Tax shall be placed on the left-hand side for, or placed above the zone served if the veteran requests to include it." So those are the graphics that, for example, the Vietnam veterans have chosen one graphic and each conflict will choose their own graphic?
That's correct, ma'am, but I want to make a correction that where once the committee approved of the design and the way it's going to be, I think it would be very difficult for us to give the option of the recipient, what is it that they want to receive? That's going to be it, you either were there or you're not.
Okay, that was my next question. Because the, on Page One, Line Nine, it says, "The veteran may request for this kind of modified plate," but I think it's probably more practical that we're modifying the plates as requested and they will receive those modified plates, right? That's what you're suggesting that?
Yes, ma'am, and that's why the community veterans' inputs are important.
Okay.
So that, you know, we could say, well, we got the inputs from the community, not just from Joe San Augustine.
Can I ask you something, Mr. San Augustine? Has the offering of these special plates brought more of the veterans in to your office for, and to be part of the registry?
I missed the question, ma'am.
Has the offering of this special plate by the government assisted in bringing more veterans into your office and registered?
Because I have to be transparent, I have not really looked into it.
Okay.
But I will now. I think my folks might know.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm curious. I have introduced a bill, was hoping to be companion with this, that would waive the fees, extend the exemption a little bit more. We have current exemptions in place for some of these license plates, currently for those with 100% disability, also for those with the special medal recipients. And so it would extend it and hopefully it's been referred now, so hopefully we'll have a hearing soon. But I'm hoping with that one, extending the exemption, that we will be able, through your office, if they apply for the exemption, to especially add them to the registry, increase our numbers officially and then get those services here on Guam that you've been asking for particularly. Sidoos Masi, thank you to all of you for being here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Terlai. Senator Barnett?
Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair, and Sidoos Masi, Torres Amzou, for your service to our island and our nation. I think one of the retiring speakers said they're, somebody said they're 100%. I'm 300% behind the bill. And, you know, since we're doing the every-other-month sessions in this legislature, I think that the soonest, according to our schedule, we'd be able to pass the bill, if it makes it through the markup and all that, would be mid to late July. So, Mr. San Augustine, after that, you know, I'm assuming it's going to pass unanimously. It's going to really come down to your office, working in concert with the different veterans groups, to get all the pertinent information and all the wants and the asks and the agreements relative to the designs and the verbiage that's going to be included. And so, Mr. Francisco, I'm hoping that, you know, if we pass this and it's subsequently signed into law in August, that we're able to get it implemented, hopefully before the end of this year. And I absolutely agree, I think the urgency has to be for the Vietnam veterans. You know, if we had a bill that's just strictly Vietnam veterans, ram it through and then, like you said, we amend it on the backend or introduce another measure, but this is the one that we have before us. And so I definitely support its passage as quickly as possible as the son, stepson, grandson of veteran. I know you guys know, I told you many times, my late grandfather was part of the Guam Combat Patrol and the Insular Guard in World War II, and I'm also the son and stepson of Vietnam veterans. So absolutely, I'm so grateful for all the service and sacrifice of our veterans community. I stand in full support of this measure and other measures that seek to improve quality of life for our veteran community. I also thank Madam Chair for the explanation on Bill 85 and the post-moment of that hearing. I'm very grateful that, it sounds like she's going to work very closely with the veterans community to turn out a bill that hopefully will be a lot better. I too was in receipt of a lot of concerns about the bill, so I'm very grateful that it's kind of back to the drawing board for that. So Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Titeigui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hafde, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. And again, I thank you for your service, but most especially for everyone that's sitting here today, I thank you for continuing to advocate for all the veterans out there. We know there's thousands of more, but each one of you here today is doing your part to keep their, you know, the advocacy alive for them too as well. So I really appreciate you being here today, it means very much. And the bill that was just referred to me, actually, if I'm, this week, if not early last week, is a bill introduced by Senator Tris Terlai that I'm looking forward to having a public hearing on. It'll be such a great compliment, you know, with this legislation and then to provide, you know, exempt the cost for our veterans who served us, to not have to pay for these license plate. I was hoping that Revenue and Tax would be here too, you know, just to ask a couple of questions, because we know that currently, right now, the license plate is, that's given for veterans, they're allowed two or are they allowed one? They're allowed four now. Okay, so they're allowed four. And then, Mr. Gumboa, when you did your testimony earlier and spoke on this legislation, you mentioned something about being able to get together to fully discuss, you know, because one of my concerns too is that some of our veterans have served in different lines, you know, from different, like Desert Storm to, you know, other programs that had come about. And how do you put that all on the license plate without being, you know, without the public safety, being able to not see the numbers correctly and stuff? But can you kind of elaborate what your thought is on trying to, you know, combine together and find out what we can do?
Sure, Senator. Thank you very much for that. So one of the things, before I forget, as we're sitting here and we're discussing, to try to make sure that we include everybody's input, at the end of this month will be the next Guam Veterans Commission meeting, and I've just asked Mr. Menel from the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to include Bill 5-38 into that discussion. And what we're hoping to do is, when we have that bill, when we have that meeting, I will request and/or print some samples that have already been made in the U.S. So it may be a cost inhibitor of transitioning from the metal stamp to the plastic. However, one of the ideas, and forgive me, even though I'm a Marine, I probably ate all my crayons, I didn't bring any crayons to draw anything special. But one of the ideas and the way it's presented in the States, so that you can, so every veteran can still express their individuality, right, was designing a plate wherein, I don't know if you can see this on the camera or if you can see this well, basically, you have your Guam and U.S. flag on the top, your Guam USA, the Tanui Mantemores up here, but on the bottom, it'd be a bigger, more bold veteran across the bottom. And what will end up happening is, there will be a subdued background, and you veterans know what subdued is, it's a little lighter background that's going to be emblazoned over there. But space on the left-hand side of the plate, and this is what I've seen stateside, space on the left-hand side of the plate is the choice for the veteran. With as many different options that you can choose from, you can choose and just say, I just want the Marine Corps logo, or I just want the Army logo, or I want my MOPH, I want my Purple Heart and things like that. So, so long as, like we're saying with DMV, we still have the numeration right there in appropriate size, that will still follow all the rules and all the laws so that it's not, like we're saying, it's not, it's not going to hamper the police department or anybody from identifying it. So to have a space on the left-hand side there, which is strictly printed, doesn't have to be embossed, just a simple print on the left-hand side that the veteran can choose. This way, these digital files can be ready at DMV, they can take a look at it and perhaps GOVA can generate a sample at the office with that document. So when they go up to Revenue and Tax, I mean, DMV, and they file it, there's already a sample ready for the print, so that when it comes back, there's no mistaking it and so on and so forth. So that's one of the things that I've seen stateside is, in the backdrop, there is a design, it could be for Marines, it could be the raising of the flag at Iwo Jima, things like that. But for the most part, I see them always reserving space, probably a one-fourth of the space of the total license plate for individuals. I've seen people put their ribbon stack on the side, they'll put their rank as a display of, you know, pride. So that's one option, I believe, that we can still move forward without making major changes locally.
Okay. And, you know, I noticed you had MC, that stands for Marine Corps, right?
Correct. So this way, you can still have...
Because my father had AF, you know, for Air Force.
So this way, the first two will still be similar to what we currently have.
To their military.
It'll be the Branch of Service and then the unique identifier would follow.
I see, I see. So we still maintain that branch of government recognition, you know, because there's a lot of different, Desert Storm, also the logos. Are all the logos the same throughout the United States and is it something that's standardized through the military?
For the most part.
For Desert Storm, for Purple Hearts and all that? So it's nothing we need to reinvent. Basically, we just need to figure out how we're going to put it on the license plate to make it work.
Correct. So while the numbers and the Branch of Service can be, will be embossed, stamped, that little left-hand side, probably about three to four inches wide on the license plate, that'll just be strictly printed, that'll just be the text. And like we're saying, the veteran can come down and say, you know what, for this plate, I want my rank at the top and I want my ribbon stack below it, or whatever it may be. The digital files can be created at Guam Office of Veterans Affairs.
Right, to determine if it's true to form, they were in that line of work, I understand.
Correct.
Greatly.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Francisco, I know you have your finger on the button.
You know, when we first started that special veteran recognition license plate, we include the Bronze Star, Silver Star, Distinguished Cross and Purple Heart. That, right now, you see in every car, whoever's a Purple Heart, whoever has a Bronze Star, whoever has a Silver Star, Distinguished Cross, they got that on their license plate now. We are going to pattern toward that. The Revenue and Tax show you how the license plate going to look. We cannot alter that. The only thing you're going to put in there, like I said, on the left side, is that the Bronze Star, Silver Star, Distinguished Cross or Purple Heart. And everything should be the same, the way the license plate look. There's a structure, how you're going to set this license plate. You cannot come up with different kind. The only thing there that's going to come, like I said, with now, the, for example, Vietnam War, we have our own logo. That logo's going to go on the left side and the rest should be all the same. When you see that logo, everybody knows that that's Vietnam veteran's logo. So every war here is supposed to have their own logo. And I think that's the job of Senator San Ag, I mean, Director San Augustine, is to come up with the design, but the Vietnam veteran already done that. We already designed. We already give it to Mr. San Augustine. We're just waiting for this bill to happen, pass and become law, so we can move forward.
And the other bill from Senator Terlai?
We're ready, we're ready. The other war will follow.
Yep, I see.
Because the reason why I say the other war, because they don't have any organization like us. We have the Vietnam Veteran of America, September 6/6/8. We have an organization. We discuss this, we decide this, we plan this. So if you consent...
So you're saying there's no Desert Storm logo?
I don't know, what's the logo? I don't know.
There is one, according to Gumboa, he's saying there is a Desert Storm logo.
Bring in the sword, cross.
I see, I see. Okay.
But Vietnam veteran have a logo.
Yeah. And other, you know, during the war, I mean, some of the other areas that our good people have served in, like Desert Storm, other affiliates, Korean War, of course, but that was further back and, you know, I have a list of them, I can't remember where I put it on my, on my document here, but there was a list of them, yeah. Desert, Operation Desert Shield, Operation Iraq Freedom, were some of the other areas. Desert, Operation Desert Shield, Operation Iraq Freedom, were some of the other areas. I'm not sure. So, I'm sure they all have their logos and that they, they wear those, those patches or those logos with pride because they served, you know, just like those who served in the Vietnam War, the Korean War. And they put their lives on the line. So, it's important that we recognize every single one of them. And I hope that that opportunity is allowed for those, those veterans. So, now, I see what you're saying, and I'm glad you guys did a lot of work on this, and we're almost to the finish line on this. And I just hope that we don't leave any of our veterans out. None of them out. It's important to keep them all there. So, other than that, do we have a dancing logo for my partner over there, my dancing partner?
Madam Chair, may it, so the only one challenge that I think that may affect a very few people is people that have served in multiple campaigns and multiple wars. It's a small group, but there is that possibility. I think that would be relying on the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to designate whether they have to choose one, or if they're going to get four plates, can they mix those plate options? So, that's just one thing to consider as well moving forward.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to hearing what your, the commission has to say about this when you have your meeting. And then, also, Madam Chair, the bill, I'm going to as fast as I can get that other bill heard. So, maybe we can put them both on the session floor at the same time and, and, you know, complement each other, as said earlier. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. And thank you, everyone, for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidagui. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on Bill 5? Okay. Well, thank you so much. We will, again, work to get Bill 5 on to the July session agenda. So, thank you so much for those of you who testified, Mr. Francisco, Mr. Gumboa, Mr. Koker, and Mr. San Augustine. We will now begin testimony on Bill 92, which I introduced. If you signed up to speak, please come to the table. Bill 92, I'll just briefly explain it. It makes November Veterans Service Recognition Month on Guam. Instead of just saying thank you on Veterans Day, it gives us the whole month to honor the men and women from Guam who have served in the military and the families who stood by them. Guam has a proud tradition of service. Our people have worn the uniform in every branch of the U.S. military. Some came home as heroes, some came home with wounds that we can't always see, and some paid the ultimate sacrifice. Their families also carried the load, keeping things together at home, praying for their safe return, and sometimes dealing with heartbreaking loss. Again, we do invite those of you who would like to speak on Bill 92 to please come to the table. We ask that you please speak clearly into the microphone, state your name, and let us know if you are here to speak on, in your individual capacity, or for a government agency, or for any particular business or organization. We'll start with you, Mr. Santiago.
Well, good afternoon, Chair, Madam Chairwoman and distinguished senators. Thank you very much. I'm going to speak frankly. I think this is a no-brainer. But I commend you. I commend all of you for recognizing all the veterans. And, you know, we have a day, right? We have a day. And for you all to see that it's much more than a day, I think it's important, not just for the veterans. I'm thinking, you know, I got the privilege to sit up here today, actually got voluntold, but anyways, I got to look at the aperture of those who follow, right? My kids, my grandkids, all of them, you know? Is this legislature going to be the legislature that marks the month of November, the month for veterans? And that's a proud day to, to say I was a veteran, come home to Guam, and our legislature saw suit to do so. So, I think that's, that's very important, you know, specifically in the world we live in today, of uncertainty, right? And we can go down the whole long list. But what is certain is the pride we have, not only as locals, but as Tremoros, but more importantly, as, as U.S. service members. And to have our elected officials see that pride and share that pride. I mean, if not all of you have family members who have served, or even you have served. So, again, it goes back to, it's a no-brainer. We are very proud. We're a proud island, proud people, and we're definitely proud as veterans. So, thank you very much, and, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Senator Gumatauto, Senator Terlahey, Senator Barnett, and Senator Telo Tidagui. You know, I see this bill that all the 15 senators are the co-sponsors, 14 co-sponsors, so it must be a good bill. I thank the authors, Senator Sabrina, for introducing this bill, and I thank all the other senators as jumping in to be the co-chair. I know that November 11 is Veterans, Veterans Day. And I know in the past that we always ask the governor to declare the month of November as Veterans Month. With this bill now, if we come law, that month will be very, very important for all the veterans in Guam, especially the organization. They can do a lot of planning and program to, in conjunction with this month. I thank, I thank Sabrina for introducing this. And like I said, the veterans in Guam, I think should be very honored to see that they look forward for this month, November. And we hope that the other veteran organization will, will do something on this month. Because I myself, August is our month, Purple Heart month. We try to do as many as we can do, as much as we can do in conjunction with the, the Purple Heart month. So, this Veterans Month, this is all the veteran, regardless of what brands. This is the month that designated to be recognized and do, do all the recognition that, and I hope that, I hope that something on a draft up, some kind of a program that should entice this, so we can say that really, the year of 2025, November, there's a lot of things going on happening for that month. So, I thank and I support this bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco. Mr. San Augustine?
Madam Chair and honorable senators, thank you. And for all the co-sponsors of this bill, thank you very much for presenting this bill. I'm in full support of this bill. In saying that, I would like to just share with you all that November 10, as Mr. Santiago mentioned, is Veterans Day. On 10 November of every year since 1775, it's the Marine Corps birthday as well. Yes. So, we look forward to this. I would like for you all to give me the authority to again recruit the commission, for us to look at the different programs and activities that we want to make, make happen. I will take the privilege to do this through probably solicitation of donations, and we see how real, how far that could go. But I think with the inputs and support of all the veterans organization and veterans of Guam, I fully support this, and I think they will be happy that such a bill is being introduced. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. San Augustine. We now will open the, the floor to my colleagues to see if they have any questions or comments, starting with you, Senator Gumatauto.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, thank you for the panel. Mr. San Augustine, let me help you out a little bit. 10 GCA Section 67106 is, it authorizes the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to solicit, accept, utilize, and administer on behalf of the Office of Veterans Affairs gifts, bequests, and donations. I think there's your pathway. But also, let me just, I wanted to say that. But the funds that received, are received shall be deposited in the Veterans Affairs Fund for the record, and gifts, bequests, and donations shall be used for specific purposes, including obviously the maintenance of the Veterans Cemetery, the maintenance of the Office of Veterans Affairs, the sponsorship of Memorial Day and Veterans Day events, and purposes intended by the donor which are consistent with the goals and objectives of the Office of Veterans Affairs. Obviously, that's looking at folks that might give longer gifts that could maybe stand the test of time, because at some point, many in this room, including ourselves, we won't be here. Based on earlier Memorial Day and Veterans Day, Veterans Day preparations, how helpful is the current law, which allows your office, the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs, to in fact solicit, accept, utilize, and administer gifts and donations for these island-wide events honoring our national heroes?
So, Senator Gumatauto, thank you for that question, and it's a great question. I'll tell you that the way those activities were funded was mainly coming from our veterans organizations. We've gone out and solicit to businesses, which they deeply contributed as well. Let me, let me tell you what my problem is. My problem is I like to self-sustain. And when you see a business going down because of COVID, right, and they start to lose their business, it's almost, it takes your appetite away from wanting to go and solicit, right? But, but that doesn't stop us from going to Bank of Guam or Bank of America, right? They got money. But we, we do that. But I'll tell you, the last that we hailed, which was the Women Veterans Day down at Ipau, holy moly, the businesses contributed a large number of food and beverage for, for that activity. So, to answer your question, if we went that route, we couldn't go wrong. We couldn't go wrong. I think many of the businesses do want to donate, do want to donate. But I'll tell you where my appetite goes away when I start to see them going down because of what happened at COVID, right? And I'll tell you, I, I contribute a lot to this event because it's my love, it's my passion, that's what I'm there for. And my colleagues, my veteran organization leaders, they do the same. So, that's how we move. But in saying this, you know, with, with the magnitude of the way we're going with this bill, it's good, it's good. Just keep in mind, Madam, Senator Sabrina, that, you know, maybe I might be coming to you for a dollar donation, but I think we could do, do with just the solicitations for this activity.
So, so I guess, so to answer my question, so you're saying that the current law does help you?
That's correct.
It is helpful? Okay.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Now, one last question, Madam Chair. Aside from the entities that are identified in the bill, including the Department of Tremoral Affairs, GDOE, and the Guam National Guard, to what extent will there be involvement by other government and non-government organizations such as, but not limited to, our friends at the University of Guam, many of my students who are part of the Army Reserve Officers Training Corps, the Guam Charter Schools, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, and how specifically can these groups assist you and our veterans groups with the annual coordination efforts? Have you ever thought about bringing them all in to help out with this, what will be Veterans Month?
Well, I, I think it'll be, it'll be a big help. So, with the committee, once we get together and figure out what activities we want, wherever these entities that you have just mentioned, whatever areas is it that they, they could help, once we identify what activities, they're, they're more than welcome. I have not availed myself to recruiting or, or requesting for their, their assistance, for say, I solely utilize the expertise of what I have with my personnel and the Vet Commission.
Okay, so I'm hoping that-
So, that's part of a lot of the directions I take. But if you're alluding to, can I utilize the help from these other organizations? Most absolutely. And it's key to what you're saying, because again, in our effort and wanting to continue to improve our registry program in Guam, right, this is one way to do that.
We should just post your phone number right now and make it easier for everybody.
688-5117.
Thank you very much. That's what I meant for the record. So, thank you very much. And, Mr. Santiago, just one last thing before you go. I just want, I wanted, I took your comments to heart, sir, and thank you again for your service to our country. And you, you're a good example for all of us that are here and, and the younger generation. We have a lot of Vietnam vets. My father was a Vietnam veteran as well, and I am not forgetting. So, thank you again for your service, sir. Appreciate your insight today.
Senator, thank you. And may I add to-
Sure.
-the Director of GOVA. Sir, the beauty of this bill, once again, is that on page six, line number eight, and you can probably start from line number one and go all the way to 27. It basically gives us a roadmap of what we should be doing, of what we should be looking at. So, this right here gives us the baseline and the direction to go move out as a commission. And I'm sorry, I'm Vince Santiago, 3rd Marine Division Association President. I'm also the second chair of the, of the Veteran Commission. And Senator, you talk about being the young guy in the room. Man, I tell you, my father was also a Vietnam veteran, a United States Marine. I'm a second generation, and my two sons are third generation. So, yes, definitely, definitely deep, deep within, in family. But this page six basically gives us the roadmap, right? It's kind of like, it's like a buffet, right? We can select all, we can select some, we can select a few. But the great thing about it is, being the entire month, and we encourage all the veteran organizations and active-duty service members, the students, sir, you mentioned the students, what an opportunity. What an, and this is what I want, I started off with, right? Let's look at how this month can impact the future leaders and future service members of the island of Guam. And this, this is a great opportunity. And, and, you know, you look about, you think about what it says there, engagement with veteran communities, and also the family members. I mean, that's, this is the roadmap. And, and, you know, Madam Chair, you know, terrific bill, terrific bill. And, and with all the senators, you know, thank you very much for supporting this. And, you know, the beauty of having the Director of GOVA, you know, in the room with us, with the, with the commission, is we all share ideas and find a way to get to yes, and put on a good show for the island of Guam and our people. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And this bill has my vote of yes too. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Gumatauto. Senator Terlahey?
Sis Tsimasi, Madam Chair. Thank you all for your testimony. And I agree with you, no-brainer. But I also think the beauty of the bill is that while the organizations have taken it upon themselves for all these years to really lead in these ceremonies, and I know the Veterans Affairs Office leads in the Memorial Day ceremony, and the government kind of joins in on that, but a lot of the rest of the activities have been led by these organizations and their own dime, their own fundraising, their own solicitation. And I think the beauty of the bill is that it brings the government in as a, and absolutely, all the resources of the government, pretty much, the agencies. It outlines which agency is going to do what, and, and what our goals are in this type of activities. It even says that the funding shall be made available from appropriations by the legislature. That's important, right? I think that's where we put our money where our mouths are, and we, when we want to honor, we help you to celebrate. We help you to, to accomplish these goals. And I, I like your suggestion, Director, that you, the part where your office is supposed is detailed to do things, that you are going to coordinate it with the commission. The commission's not necessarily mentioned in here, but I think coordinating with them would be perfect to add in right there. And I would like to add, I'd like the goals, like, there's a whole long list of them, but my favorites are preserve and share the stories of veteran service members. It's most impressive to me in my life to be able to hear your stories. That's what's inspiring to me individually. I think it's inspiring to our community. We're so proud that we have all of you who have served. We have Tremoros who have excelled, have been awarded our special, they just really made us all so proud. And I want all of our future generations, as Mr. Santiago says, I want them all to know those stories. So, I like the goal that says to preserve and share the stories of veteran service members. There's another goal here that says support programs that assist veterans and their families. So, we've got programs in place, but I guess this is a time that we go all out, and we make sure that we don't miss anyone. It says documentation of veterans' oral histories. There's been some of that done, but I say, why not all of you, particularly those, as you say, the Vietnam veterans are, their numbers are not increasing, they're, they're decreasing. decreasing, unfortunately, that's the reality, but every single one of their stories is so dear to us, and I would like to see all of those recorded. But I would, if anything, add just one more goal to this, and that is to, in all of these, to, to tie them in to your office and the registry, right? So that we can always tie all of our government activities into that goal of building our registry and getting that regional office here. That's what we want to do, the regional services that you've all been asking for. Sisusmasi, and I support this bill, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. I look forward, I'm sorry, Senator Turli, and I look forward to working with you on, during the markup hearing on this bill for any proposed amendments that you may like to include. Senator Barnett?
Sisusmasi, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak in support of the bill, I'm very grateful to be included as a co-sponsor as well. And, you know, I agree, you know, you don't deserve just a day. In fact, I don't think you deserve a month. I think every day, all year, should appreciate and respect the sacrifices and the service that our veteran community has made such a significant and important part of our community. And I agree with Speaker Turli and a lot of these activities that are added. I mean, we're not just making November the month of, you know, Veterans Celebration, but there's a lot of different things that a lot of different agencies are going to be tasked to do. For example, in the schools, veterans invited to share their experiences with the students. Curriculum shall include lessons about Guam's military history. Student projects shall focus on veteran contributions to our community. There's also National Guard recognition, support services. The bill even mandates the governor, she shall issue an annual proclamation for Veteran Service Recognition Month. So, you know, in my mind, with this bill's passage, what I'm envisioning is a month-long celebration of recognition and respect to our veteran community. And for me, I really want to highlight what I believe is the most important part of, of this measure, and that is the funding. The implementation of Veteran Service Recognition Month program shall be subject to funds appropriated by Ilas Laturen Guamhan. And I think that's important because if we're going to say that we recognize and we respect our veteran community, then I don't think we should tell them to go out there and solicit donations, to go out there with their hat in their hand, even though many organizations are very willing to support. I think if we're going to support our veteran community, then we have to literally put our money where our mouth is. And so for me, that's the best part, and I, I don't want to tell you guys, go beg out there for donations so that we can have a celebration, so that we could recognize you. I want to be able to empower you with that funding because I think that shows the true support. Because, you know, the end of the day, we can say we appreciate the veterans, we can give the veterans a month. In fact, we just gave the veterans a year. Remember, it was the Year of the Veteran. Lo, a lot of the veteran community was, was not happy with the way the Year of the Veteran turned out. So I just want to say, if we're going to truly support, then let's truly support, and let's not just pay lip service and say, oh, it's the Year of the Veteran, and we're going to promise you the Hessler Building. But have you got the Hessler Building? Ah, he, no. So for me, that's very important, that we, we really support you guys in that, in that way, and make this truly a month where we recognize and respect our veteran community. Sisusmasi, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak in, in support of the bill.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Mr. Moffness.
Thank you, Senator, Madam, and to the member of the 38 Guam Legislature. I'm just sure to echo what Senator Turli mentioned, and my colleague to my right, Sergeant Major Santiago. You know, I'm also a war survivor, right? So the thing about this telling story is, don't ask me how to tell you about what happened during the war, right? Because, you know, I get goosebumps when I mention that, but I can tell you what happened during the war, whatever conflict you're in. So what I'm trying to say here is that, you know, to teach our young folks, our young kids that are going to be here, whatever, is, you know, have one of some, some of the veterans to tell the story, what happened during their conflict. You know, we have a lot of war conflict here, and maybe we can keep that on record so that in the future, we can review that all, Senator, I mean, Sergeant Major Santiago went to all this conflict. I've been to all these conflicts, so when it comes for me to determine which veterans player I'm going to choose, whether I choose Vietnam, Operation Desert Storm, Operation the Seal. So what I want to say here really, to back up, is let's have some of the veterans tell the story, what happened, okay? And this is, will be the future for our young generation so that they say, oh, my dad was in Vietnam, and this is what happened during his tour, or my dad was in Desert Storm, this is what happened, okay? But if you're going to ask me, I can tell you that, but please don't ask me about what happened during the war surviving situation, because I wouldn't tell you that, because it's really hard to say that. Thank you.
If you could please state your name, first and last name.
My name is Joseph Moffness. I'm also a retired Army Command Sergeant Major, 36 years of service. Thank you.
And are you speaking for, in your individual capacity?
Yes, in my individual capacity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Santiago?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staying in line with the stories, last month, a representative from the Congressional Library in the United States came and was interviewing veterans to tell our stories. Our nation is already moving out with that, and what a, what an awesome thing to do, to come all the way to Guam to hear our stories. So our stories right now is in the Congressional Library. So I think, recommendation, right, if we're really going to go full bore on this, why don't we do it? Right? To where our young students, our families, they can just click a video and hear the stories. I mean, what an opportunity, if we really want to capitalize on what we're really doing, going back to what, you know, distinguished senators have already said, and, you know, what, you know, just keep, just keep that snowball growing, right, for the goodness and, and remembering everything that veterans before us and our family members after us would do. Thank you.
Thank you. And you certainly have several members in this legislature who have served in the media and have a lot of experience in, in doing interviews and archiving stories. So thank you. Senator Taidegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thank you so much, everyone, for being here and advocating for the veterans. I just wanted to say, you know, I'm proud to be a, a co-sponsor of this legislation, and I want to make sure it works. It's not going to be perfect, there's going to be situations that come up that may be addressed. And, but I want to give the opportunity, that leeway for whoever's overseeing this. And this would be under Director San Augustine, you would be overseeing this on, on Veterans Month? Oh, okay, sorry, say it again. Say it again?
The commission.
The commission and, and-
Along with the commission.
Mr. Santiago next to you?
Yes.
Okay. He's part of the commission, of course, yes. So of course, you're going to have a lot of help. And, and, I mean, looking here, we've already got many of us here who, who want to do everything they can to assist the veterans, and especially make the first one in November to be the biggest one, right? And, but we have time now until then, and of course, during the markup meeting, if there's anything that we need to include, so let's not just say this is a done deal. We'll have a markup meeting that the chairman will, will put together and, and see something. I see something here that I, I may want to consider because it, some of the stuffs, some of the things that are mentioned in here might not be, it'll be, be done. I mean, it would be nice to have it, but when you put in any kind of legislation, shall, that means you have to do it, else you'll be breaking the law. So in this section, Mr. Santiago, when you were talking earlier on page six, line 21, it says shall, in this one particular program requirement during Veteran Service Recognition Month, the following programs and activities shall be conducted. So you have to do this. Well, what if there's something in here that you, you can't do for one reason or another, or you don't have a volunteer that comes up, or just for one reason or another? So, you know, Madam Chair, I was hoping that maybe we can put may there and give them that flexibility, you know, and this would also allow you to put something else in there later on that you might find very interesting for the public, or to engage an outreach to our public. And not to, you know, leave Veterans Day, you know, second, you know, but right above in the Guam Code annotated in section 1040 is Women Veterans Recognition Day. And now this, when it becomes law, will be 01041. And it, it's just so perfect that it's together, you know, during the holidays, that it's recognized. So even, you know, we have the women first on, okay, okay, I'll let that go, but, but I just, again, thank you all for, for contributing your time, your effort, and encouraging other veterans to do the same. It always helps to get them up and out from what they're doing, get them out of the house, you know, get them involved. So I, I hope that you guys continue that effort. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Mr. Santiago, you wanted to make a statement?
Senator, thank you very much, and, you know, good catch with that shall, right? As service members, words have meaning, and when you see that word shall, there is no question, and you, it's a do, you will do it. But good catch, ma'am. And as an educator with the Marine Corps J R T C at Okadu High School, I can tell you, may is a key word, because we just can't have anybody walk into a classroom and start speaking, right? Because what if that story is not necessarily a good story to tell? Right? So that vetting process, just like me as a J R T C instructor, I can't have anybody just walk into my classroom. There's a vetting process that has to happen. So ma'am, thank you very much for catching that. Thank you.
And thank you to our panel for testifying on Bill 92 today, and thank you to my colleagues that are here with us today and extending their support. And again, this bill has all 15 senators as co-sponsors of this legislation. It will, again, like Bill Five, will go through the markup process, and we will, I will work aggressively to make sure that this is on July session agenda. Again, thank you, Mr. Francisco, for coming today, Mr. Santiago, Mr. San Augustine, and Mr. Moffness for being with us. Is there anybody else that would like to testify on Bill 92? Yes, please.
Name is Dan Mendiola, member of various organizations, veterans organizations here in Guam. And I think a lot of things were brought out here today, and I fully realize that this compounded with a lot of things that goes on with new senators coming onboard and older senators as well. But I, I see an opportunity. I didn't make any written comments for today, but I'd like to say something in support of the Veterans Day, for example. I have gone through a lot of meetings in reference to Veterans Day and supporting Veterans Day. That's very important that we highlight this event, and with all the support that we can get from our in-house agencies. For example, we have been missing Parks and Recs in part of the meetings that Mr. San Augustine has come up with. Public Works barely comes to the meeting when the Veterans Day meetings are being conducted. We need to be very watchful on these supports that we need. And I think, for the better part, we can save a lot of money, because Mr. San Augustine needs a platform for Veterans Day. He needs a stage. Who can come up with a stage? Public Works. They got the materials, they got the manpower, they got the architecture, they got all the people that worked with them to support this program. But we were missing these things in the past. We need to get into our in-house agencies to encourage them to make this meeting, participate, and offer what they can do. We've missed out a couple of years ago in having Veterans Day at Ipau Beach. Why? Which has been known in the past that Mr. San Augustine has always pre-reserved Ipau Park for Veterans Day. But there's this one Veterans Day that we didn't get it because Parks and Recs didn't know anything about it. So we have a problem. And I think that's the in-house I'm trying to refer here, fully realizing that if we use all the concepts and all our in-house capabilities, that we could support this program. The 11th of November, Veterans Day, and I know the other organizations are also capable of helping, but they're, they're doing it out of their own resources. We're getting donations and stuff like that, and that's good. But I think the burden of making this program successful lies upon our agencies in the government of Guam, and they need to come out and help. They need their representatives there when Mr. San Augustine calls for the first meeting for Veterans Day Committee and be represented. G P D as well, G P D, security, fire department, all these people need to endorse and participate. Other than that, I guess I'm here saying that we just need to review, what have we been doing in the past and what are we missing? And I, I think if we sum everything up, police, fire, ambulance, Public Works, Parks and Recs, we should never miss out in making this particular day a nice Veterans Day and highly supported by our agencies to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendiola. Mr. San Augustine, I think we can probably discuss a little bit more about some of the issues that he brought up regarding inter-agency collaboration and, and communication. So, thank you. Thank you. And also, thank you to everyone. He's, well, thank you, everybody that testified, and everyone that is here today, and those of you who are watching online. Your participation ensures our work remains grounded in the real needs of the people we serve. If you were unable to testify today, the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs will continue to accept written testimony until June 26, 2025. You can submit your statements in person at the Guam Congress Building here in Hagatna or via email to office.senatorbree@guamlegislature.org. Is it .org? .gov? I think it's Guam, yeah, guamlegislature.gov. This concludes today's hearing. The time now is 3:26 in the afternoon. The Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs is now adjourned. Sisusmasi.